Call the meeting to order, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have quite a full house here tonight, sorry for the folks to have to sit on the floor against the wall, but we have our recognitions and I assume that I'm turning over to Sandy for those.
Thank you, first we're going to ask Parker Holm to come on up to the mic. We are absolutely thrilled to introduce Parker. He's the son of Jamie and Jason Holm, and Jamie you might recognize, science teacher at the high school. Parker has earned the highest possible ACT composite score of thirty-six. And just so you know what an honor that is, on average, less than one tenth of one percent of students who take the ACT earn that top score. I mean, that's amazing. So, the ACT consists of English, mathematics, reading, science, and each test is scored on a scale of one through thirty-six, and then the composite score is an average of those four test scores. So, I've asked Parker, he's a junior, you need to know that too, a junior in scoring a thirty-six, just to talk a little bit about what he's involved at the high school, and he's not sure he has plans yet after high school since he has a little bit of time, but we'll find out what he's involved in right now.
Uh, yeah, at the high school right now, as in terms of clubs and such, I'm in Peer Helpers, I'm sure some of you know what that is, it's an organization that helps other students with issues they may face, or it's like relationship, relationships, or drug or alcohol issues, or something more serious, like depression. I'm also involved in Student Council, as well as NHS, and a new leadership group that's meeting with the principals and some administrators, try to get some new ideas going for what could help us as a student body to improve the current school conditions that we're in. And I'm also involved, um, this is, these aren't clubs, but classes, I'm in, um, a lot of AP classes, which are very valuable to learn in, provides a bigger challenge than the traditional class setting, and that really helps with the understanding that it takes to score well in ACT, score well in standardized tests, as well as the AP tests to get credit for college, and get an advantage in terms of learning, and get ahead of other students to try to get an education beyond where we are currently. And, yeah, that's nice. And the academy program as well, I'm in the STEM Academy, and right now, I'm not entirely sure what I want to do after high school, like she said, but I am leaning towards something in the science field, where it's, whether it's engineering or biomedical engineering, or something more towards the healthcare side, where it's like doctor, surgeon, that kind of thing. But the academy program's nice too, because it's a different view on learning, you get more group work, more, um, it's problem solving instead of just notes, lectures, quizzes, tests, that kind of thing. So, it really rounds your education, you get a different view on it, it's more interesting, and it's nice to get both sides. You still have the other classes with the notes and lectures and tests, which does help with standardized testing like the ACT, but you also get the group learning, the other view of it, the problem solving, which helps with ACT as well, with the, like, you have to think quick on ACTs and tests like that, and that helps, solving problems quickly like that.
Well, again, we want to say congratulations, and we know you're going to be successful in whatever you do, and you know you're going to represent Hudson wherever you may decide to attend school after high school.
I'll try.
All right.
Any other board members have questions or comments?
Was it your first time taking it?
It was, yeah.
Well done.
And, uh, did you take any of the study courses that they offer with the ACT?
No, I did not, I took, I took-
Thought you could get a free plug for some company there.
Yeah, no, I did, I took, honestly, I took two, probably ten question practice tests and a couple of sections the night before, but that was it, nothing beyond that.
So, you are, so you are taking AP classes now?
Yeah.
And how many have you taken so far?
Uh, last year I took two, this year I have, I'm taking four at the school, and then two that were offered online.
And then next year?
I'm taking five next year, five AP classes.
Right, so any, what, and so far you've taken your tests for those, have those come as easy as the ACT, or?
Um, not as easy as the ACT, but they've gone well.
All right, well, I'd like to hear that our AP courses here are challenging, so that's good to hear.
Right, yeah.
Anyway, congratulations, and again, congratulations, Jason and Jamie, for your students' achievement.
One more, uh, so, since you're on TV here, um, how much do you charge per hour for tutoring then?
I'm happy to help, but anyone, I don't know.
Congrats.
Great job.
Thank you. Next, we'd like to bring up our group of middle school students, you'll come up kind of right behind the microphone where Park was, I know you're going to have to stand in a row this time, but... These singers auditioned and were members of the WCDAs middle level all-state choir at the Wisconsin Choral Director Association State Music Convention in Appleton, January fourteenth, fifteenth. Their director at the middle school is Carol Dolly, so she's going to describe a little bit about what they went through to earn this honor, and then we'll let them introduce themselves.
Okay, we, I actually entered, um, auditioned them earlier in the fall, knowing that this is something we do every year, and as it turned out, then I submit my names and I rank my students, and then they get audition samples from, or audition entries from music directors all across the state, and a hundred and thirty kids only are chosen from across the state. And I want you to know, Hudson had nine in this group, and that was more than any other town in the state of Wisconsin, so I'm really proud of these kids. Once they were, they found out they were selected for this, then we had after-school rehearsals, and their parents are very involved too, because their parents had to make the arrangements to get them to Appleton. It's part of the Wisconsin Choral Directors Association State Convention, and they have a middle level honors choir, they have a men's honors choir, a women's honors choir, a vocal jazz honors choir, a collegiate honors choir. Wisconsin Choral Directors Association is all about choirs all the time, so it's really a, gives, always gives me a burst of energy to be there and to have my kids exposed to these kinds of things, and then, so they're rehearsing with a hundred and thirty kids from across the state, and they bring in a guest director to do that, and I peeked in and watched some of the rehearsals, but once they're there, I'm kind of out of the picture. And then that, in the evening, they get to go to attend some of the concerts that are set up for the choral directors across the state, so they really heard some high caliber choirs as well. And then the next day, the final day of the convention, they present their music to everybody in the, at Lawrence University it was this year, the Wisconsin Choral Directors changes their venue throughout, every two years they go someplace else, but Appleton is where it was last year and this year, and next year I believe it's going to be in Wausau. Anyway, the kids had a great time, and maybe they could even tell you something they liked about it, but I will let them introduce themselves to you. So, thank you for giving them this honor.
So, students, if you would say your name, tell us what part, were you a soprano, alto, tenor, bass, and then, yes, one memorable piece about being in an all-state choir. Want to start at the end?
I'm Lucy Norwald, and, um, a memorable, a memorable thing that we did was we went to the chapel and we watched a performance, and it was really good, and we learned a lot of new music experiences.
She's a soprano?
Yeah, I'm a soprano.
Hello, I am Jack Burdis, I am a bass, and one memorable thing was actually getting to sing with all kids from all across the state, it was very fun.
Hi, my name is Josh Penshorn, and I was a tenor too, and I, my favorite, one of my favorite memories was going to the chapel also, and listening to the awesome music they had to play there.
I'm Lordaun Lane, and, um, I was an alto, and a memorable moment, or, it wasn't really a moment, but I remember the chapel because it was really, really pretty, and it was, it just kind of amazed me.
Um, I'm Lane, I'm a soprano, and I think something really memorable is when you go there, you kind of understand the effort everyone puts in, everyone wants to be there instead of your normal school choir, where sometimes people don't always put in the best effort, where everyone's always putting a hundred percent all the time, so that's really memorable.
Uh, I'm Olivia Halverson, I was an alto, and something I enjoyed was just meeting people from all over the state that love music as much as I do.
I'm Briella Anderson, and I was a soprano, and I liked meeting new friends.
Hello, my name is Zach Peterson, and I think I was a tenor. Um, my favorite part was probably meeting everybody, and, you know, like, going to the chapel and having a memorable time, like, with everybody, and just being part of the choir, and, and hearing all of ourselves together as a group was pretty amazing, it was pretty good. If, like, you can, next time, I would go and, like, watch it. It was, it was pretty good.
That's good.
Again, congratulations, and we can tell that you are high caliber musicians, and you did a great job representing the Hudson School District, thank you so much.
Great job.
And next, we want to bring up, back up Carol Dolly. Carol has received the Stanley Custer Distinguished Service Award, and this goes to a member whose contributions to the organization are exemplary and go beyond the normal services provided for the operation of the Wisconsin Choral Directors Association. So, here to talk about her colleague and friend is Connie Root.
We thought it would be appropriate to go over some of the things that got Carol to receive this award in the first place, um, I'll share a few, and I think they're extremely, well, it's the reason why, uh, she's put in a lot of service. I'll read just a few of these bullet points. Carol first served on the WCDA, WCDAs board in two thousand, when she was elected Northwest District Rep. Although she had the option of serving in that position for two years, she chose to serve four. She also served as State Chair of the WCDARNS, which is Repertoire and Standard Committee, for four years. In two thousand and five, she accepted the position of the WCDAs historian, which means she did research to find out all about the past WCDAs officers and past WCDAs district representatives. She also researched and created a database for past repertoire singing, of the singing in Wisconsin festivals, and all-state choirs, as well as a database for all guest conductors in singing in Wisconsin, and all of the all-state choirs, that's a lot of work. She also researched and created a database for all WCDAs awards that have been presented over the years, in other words, she did a lot of the back leg work and got things really, really organized for the organization. From two thousand and one to two thousand and eleven, Carol served as the Concert Program Director for all the choirs which performed at the state WCDAs conventions. She was a greeter for the schools, she just basically oversaw all the groups that performed at the conventions. Since two thousand, Carol has been the unofficial photographer for the state WCDAs conventions to be published in their magazine, Soundings, The Voice of WCDAs. Since two thousand and one, she has also been the person that's in charge of, a lot of these directors and students and schools receive plaques, so she has kept that all organized, ordering the plaques, bringing the plaques to the convention, and making sure the appropriate people receive those awards. In two thousand and four, I think I was a part of this, she was awarded the WCDAs Outstanding Middle Level Choral Director Award at the convention. And then, when the National ACDA Convention was held in Madison in two thousand and twelve, Carol was the hospitality co-chair, welcoming and working with all the performing choirs from across the nation, local, national, and international, at the Overture Center in Madison. And I'd like to close with, the person that nominated Carol for this award is a friend of hers that she has met by putting this service towards the state, and her name is Lucy, she always refers to her as Lucy, it says Lucinda here, Lucy Thayer, who is a professor of music and director of choral activities at UW-Stevens Point, and she is the past president of the Wisconsin Choral Directors Association. And she writes, quote, "It is not merely the length of time that Carol has served on the board, but the total commitment that she made. I don't have any statistics, but I do know that while I was on the board for eight years, she never missed a board meeting. When Carol commits to something, she commits one hundred percent. As collegiate RNS Chair while she was Chair of the RNS Committee, I was both impressed and grateful for her extraordinary organizational skills. She established a logical rotating timetable for which RNS Chair should submit articles to our newsletter, and we received timely emails with reminders about approaching deadlines. It should also be noted that Carol oftentimes had the longest drive to attend board meetings, but she never used that as an excuse for missing one. Carol has been a passionate supporter of all things WCDAs and a tireless advocate for our organization. I'm confident that with her advocacy will continue for long after she retires. It would be wonderful if her service to WCDAs could be rewarded with the Stanley Custer Distinguished Service Award. I doubt there will be anyone in the near future who so willingly will give up many hours," and then she puts in parentheses, "and years of service. Sincerely, Lucinda Thayer." So, that is Carol's service to the state of Wisconsin and all the, to the teachers, music teachers, and the students.
All right, excellent.
Carol.
And I need to thank our school board, although none of you were on the board at the time I'm referring to, because I've been around so long, but when we first opened the new middle school, and I, I was getting involved, my kids with more, you know, the more I do for the state, the more I see I can do things for my kids, and that's what it's all been about from the beginning. But I was asked, you know, would you run for Northwest Rep, would you run for, and I said, "No, I can't, I'm too busy, I have too much, blah, blah, blah." Said, "If I ever get some help, then I'll consider it." Well, back in two thousand, I think it was two thousand is when LeAnn Stein was hired, and she has some of the voice lessons, and she has the general music classes, so then I had no more excuses for not getting involved, and, you know, and so, when I did, it was just I hit the road running, and I could see all the things that I could benefit from that would help me benefit, you know, my students would benefit, and it just, you know, and you get to know, you make connections across the whole state, and you have questions about this, or questions about that, and it's just a, a great network of, of people out there supporting the choral arts, and, but it all comes down to, will it work for my kids, and if it did, then I did it. And it was, and other kids, other kids throughout the state, because it's a, you know, it's a statewide thing. So, I was really honored to receive that, and I know they don't do it very often, so I was really even more flattered to hear that, because I know how often they do it, because I have the database on it. So, it was a surprise when I was told about it, and, uh, thank you for, for letting me share this, and thank you for the honor of being a member of Hudson staff, I have loved every minute of it, thank you.
Board comments?
Um, I have one. I, I think Carol Dolly exemplifies the best of the best as far as our teaching staff, and I know there are many Carol Dollies on our teaching staff at the middle school and the high school, but I really admire your passion, and I really admire your, the completeness with which you offer your abilities and your skills and your knowledge, and your inspiration to your students, and she's my neighbor.
Thank you, neighbor.
Any other comments? I just want to thank you again for your service, I mean, you set a great example, number one, representing Hudson and the district and the high performing district that we are, just a further example of that, but also showing an example to the kids to, A, get involved, and when you get involved, give it your all, so, thank you for doing those things.
You're welcome, thank you.
Next, that takes care of our recognitions, and next up, our request to speak to the Board of Education, I am aware of one such request, is there any others?
Yeah.
Okay, so we do have two, all right, and what's your name then?
Nick Barham.
Nick?
Barham.
Okay, Nick Barham, all right. Well, I'll have, what I'll do is, since there's less than three, you guys can have five minutes, so, go ahead. Roger Heath, and you're from Briar Lane, here in Hudson.
Yep, Brianna Lane.
Brianna, thank you.
Um, I'm, uh, my name's Roger Heath, I'm the president of Lacrosse Area, Hudson Area Lacrosse Association. Uh, it's been a number of years since we've, we've talked to you, talked to the school, uh, so I just want to give you guys some, some updates of what we've doing, what we're doing, what we've done, how we've grown, um, and, uh, you know, our main reason we're here is we're, we're looking for some field space. Um, we've outgrown what, what, what you've allotted us, um, which we're very grateful for, but, uh, this, this, this sport has exploded, and, uh, we're, we're just, we're at wits' end trying to find spots for our, for our kids to play, so, uh, Hala, for short, was established in two thousand and eight with one youth team of fourteen players. By two thousand and eleven, we had our very first varsity team and four youth teams with approximately one hundred kids playing. In two thousand and thirteen, we fielded our first JV and varsity team. Those teams went on to win the state championship in the Minnesota Boys Scholastic Lacrosse Association. Um, the MBSLA, for short, is a non-sanctioned organization that allows club teams to play. Um, it's, uh, since we're so close to Minnesota, it's, it's been fantastic for Hudson, they've, it's allowed our sport to explode in Hudson, and, uh, and so it's been great, so we've been very fortunate to, to play in the MBSLA. Last year, Hala had approximately three hundred and fifty kids playing lacrosse. Hudson is currently, has more kids playing lacrosse than Woodbury and Steel Waters program. Um, Hala will also have two youth girls teams this year, we, we go off, on and off, we, we struggle with the girls, we, we try to offer it, it's more getting support, someone to help run the program, because the boys program just keeps growing and growing and growing, so, but we will have two youth girls programs this year as well, so. In, uh, in two thousand and sixteen, this year, we will have approximately one hundred high school boys playing. For the first time, we will have four high school teams playing this spring, which is, which is huge, it's, you know, one, it, it creates a, a traffic jam with the fields that we have, but also the amount of kids that are still playing and, and not dropping out, we're not getting the kids dropping out, so it's just getting bigger and bigger for us. Along with the four high school teams, we will have five to six youth teams playing the spring lacrosse for the first time. So, again, field space, uh, with the four high school teams, we'll have five to six youth teams playing in the spring at the same time. Uh, in June, when summer lacrosse starts, we expect another four to six teams to be added to the five, six spring teams that will be underway. Um, the leagues that we play in, Hudson High School has been playing with the MBSLA. Um, it, it, the MBSLA was created to bring lacrosse to the area, to the girl's sport, this has succeeded. There are currently fifty sanctioned high school teams in the state of Minnesota, over fifty. In two thousand and sixteen, our varsity and JV teams are joining the Wisconsin Lacrosse Federation, and our JV two and nine-ten teams will be, will, will continue playing in the MBSLA. The WLF is the only lacrosse organization in the state of Wisconsin. They are a mix of club teams and high school ran lacrosse teams, primarily down Madison, Milwaukee, lacrosse, Green Bay area. The WLS, the WLF is in the process of working with the Wisconsin Interscholastic Athletic Association, WIAA, to get lacrosse recognized as a high school sport. The WLF is also in the process of helping to create more teams closer to our area, which will see significant growth in the region. Uh, the WLF also sees Hudson as a very important piece to grow lacrosse in western and northern Wisconsin, so they're very excited that, that we're joining, they've been wanting us to join for a number of years, uh, this year we're finally taking that jump, and we're pretty excited about it. Um, our youth teams have been playing in, in the spring, MBSLA, summer, youth lacrosse Minnesota, and in fall, homegrown lacrosse leagues. Uh, this year, the youth programs are being restructured, uh, this restructuring pushing more youth teams to play in the spring, uh, the same time the high school is, and that leads us into our field shortage that we need help with, so.
Hi to them with the Hudson Lacrosse Association, I'm treasurer. Just a little bit about what we require for field space, um, lacrosse is played, played on a field space about as large as a football field, um, it's a hundred and ten, the playing area is a hundred and ten yards long by sixty yards wide, plus, give or take another ten yards on either side of the field. We do rent some space from Willow Ridge, just north of the town, um, as a, more or less a practice field, we kind of chop it in half, it's not quite large enough to be a, a playable field. Um, we have gotten permission from Hudson Parks to use Prospect Park for our U nine teams' practice. The Hudson School District has allowed us to use, or is allowing us to use, both Rivercrest and Holton for a total of one good game field, which is the south field, um, here at the, uh, the school, and an average game field at Holton, um, and the, unfortunately, the, the north field here at, at Rivercrest, uh, it seems to take a beating just due to a lot of traffic from the kids and everybody playing out, um, here, um, so, with the restructuring of the youth programs and the growth of our high school program, Hala has outgrown our current field space to allow for adequate practice space and quality game fields. Um, we are two to three practice fields short, and one to two game fields short, um, in our current need. As far as our, kind of our contributions that we've made financially to the, um, you know, to our program, to the, the community, um, you know, each year we spend a considerable amount of money on keeping the fields in better shape than what we find them each year. Starting in two thousand and nine, um, you know, again, very small program at that point, we had donated five hundred dollars to Raider Elite, also in two thousand and ten and two thousand and eleven. In two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twelve, we donated two hundred and fifty dollars to each Rivercrest and Holton Elementary Schools. In two thousand and twelve, we started really focusing on how we were going to improve the fields and keep them in a playable, um, safe format for our teams. In two thousand and twelve, we spent thirty-nine hundred dollars on field improvements, just keeping the grass, the dirt, from really getting beat up. Um, in two thousand and thirteen, we also spent four thousand dollars, um, in two thousand and thirteen, we decided that we were going to create our own land fund to try and purchase some property somewhere, um, unfortunately, um, it's pretty tough to, to save up what I think we are going to require for purchasing just one chunk of land. It's been estimated that we expect to spend about a million dollars if we would like to have five fields to be able to use and play, um, that would be, you know, buying a raw piece of land and then excavating and grading and just getting it ready to go. Um, in two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen, um, we also have spent four thousand dollars each year as well on fertilizing and, uh, we call it aerobating, is that correct? Um, which is essentially breaking up the dirt to keep it soft so that it, it's able to soak in some of the nutrients that it needs in order to maintain good growth. Um, we also, you know, again, we stripe the fields, we make sure that we're, um, you know, contributing to mowing the fields if they need to be mowed, um, I know that that's been done by several of our volunteers on the, uh, the association. Um, so, we are in desperate need of more field space, and we have exhausted all areas that we know of for more space, so we are coming to you guys to ask you guys to see what we can get some help with, as far as some potential extra fields.
All right. Thank you for that presentation, and I guess, we might have board members that have a few questions, but ultimately, this is probably something that would go through Facilities and Grounds Committee, I would suspect, but, you know, are there, I mean, I want, I want you to repeat, I know you started giving statistics how you grew from fourteen players to now over a hundred, how many are we having in the male and female areas?
Right now, we have about three hundred and fifty male, and probably forty to fifty female, um, as of last year, so, and that fluctuates, it seems like it keeps, the boys keep growing and growing and growing, you know, and we, we were, we've been averaging seventy-five new, new boys each year, and that's youth at high school, so we get new, new high school players as well, each year.
And we do a fair amount of draw, and I, again, a fair amount of draw from other areas, um, I know we've got players coming from Prescott, we've got some coming from Menominee, Richmond, um, I think we had one from Amory come down.
Yeah, we've, we've got about ten or fifteen kids from, I'll say that's why we're area lacrosse, since, uh, no other communities in this area offer, we do allow them to come in and play with us, um, and, uh, what was I going to say?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Did I understand you correctly that the state of Wisconsin doesn't recognize lacrosse as a high school team?
Correct, not yet.
And Minnesota does, right?
Minnesota does, yep. Wisconsin is a little bit further behind to get more population in this area, uh, in, in Minnesota, Twin Cities area, so it was a lot easier for them to, to, to take, pick that up, and they, literally, they, every year, you know, they, they get five or six new teams coming into Minnesota, so, and Wisconsin is doing that now, there, there's, there's approximately forty teams down, uh, in the Madison, Milwaukee area, um, and like I said, I was on a, the, their last board meeting call, and they are working with eighties to, to get, because they need twenty-six to write a letter of intent, uh, for the WIAA to, to, to start offering that, so they're in that process of doing that right now, so, it's going to be several- So, it, it's going to be several years, and, and we don't expect the high school to pick us up right now. Eventually, that's our goal. We'd love to have our, our, our high school boys be recognized as, as a high school sport because they, they work very hard and they, a lot of kids have been in it since, you know, third grade. So, it's been great. And we have talked to the facilities there and asked for space last year, and they said they didn't have any more, you know, more space available, so we didn't know where else to go.
Mr. President?
Yep.
So first of all, congrats on building such a tremendous program. You know, I mean, to get that sort of participation and continued growth is, is impressive. So, nice work to you and all the other community members for doing that. Super silly question because I'm sure you've approached this, but how about the soccer fields? Have you talked to them about partnering? I mean, is it even worth it or?
We have talked to them, you know, they, they, they don't.
Haven't been shown a lot of interest at all.
Okay.
In, you know, giving us the opportunity even try and use the fields.
Okay.
Just saying that they don't have the space to, to allow us to do so.
Yeah. Several years ago, we also rented the booster field from the boosters.
Yep.
But they wanted a lot of money for it. And so we just, we stopped, and that's when we started putting more money into Rivercrest. And, and actually, that south field is a very nice field. We, we get a lot of compliments from that field, but we baby it too. We, we try to, you know, try to keep it well maintained and off, you know, our players off there just on games, especially in the springtime.
So, the other folks in the audience here, most of them are supporting lacrosse, I presume?
Absolutely, yes.
Which is, which is impressive to get that many folks to come out on a blustery evening. So, kudos to all of you for continuing to support that as well. Last question, I guess, would be, do you play on turf at all? I mean, has that been anything that you guys have played on in the past?
We play other associations. That's our main playing field in the springtime with the teams that we play. That's, that's a majority of what we play on in the springtime. And then, when it comes to state championships, typically, it's on turf or tournaments that we play.
All right. And are you staying close to the referendum that's up right now for?
I'm, I'm aware of it. I don't know if anybody else is, but yes, I've heard, I've heard about it.
There's a lot of listening sessions, so, I mean, it would be something to consider and check out, you know, that is part of the referendum. Particularly, you know, with turf, one of the things that people have been most impressed with is that you can use it, you know, 24/7, right?
Yes.
So, you, you know, in terms of the upkeep and some of those opportunities for efficiency are there, but it's going to take the community to, to, you know, get behind some of that and support it. So, yeah, I, I, you know, I'd love to see the activity and I'd love to see if we can find a way to do it. I happen to chair Facilities and Grounds. So I guess we'll have it on our next meeting. That said, I, I'm sure it's not an easy solution because there's a lot of bright people in your group. I, I would suspect that if, if an easy solution was out there, you probably would have already come up with it, so.
Absolutely. We do, we do have some, some association members that are working on, basically a land committee, going to local businesses to eventually get, you know, so we can get our own land. But like I said, that may be five, 10 years from now.
Sure.
Like I said, with the, with the, the kids that are playing in Hudson, it's just, every year, we think it's going to, you know, kind of shrink a little bit, but it just gets bigger and bigger. And so every year, we're playing catch-up, what do we do now? What do we do now? And, and this year, it's really gotten scary. We don't know what we're going to do. We really don't, but we'll, we'll figure it out.
Good problem to have.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, well, thanks, guys. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you very much.
And, yeah, I just wanted to add to, I guess, to follow up on Bruce's last thought there with the referendum. And this is kind of, I think, what was brought up in our nine-month community engagement process, the fact that this referendum, which the third question deals with doing a multipurpose stadium, something that can be used a lot more frequently. I think you've helped highlight and illustrate the need for that because it's just, the natural grass gets tore up and it requires a lot of maintenance and you can't have multiple sports on there in one given season like you can with synthetic turf. And, you know, when your solution is just buying more land, and we all know how much that's expensive in the Hudson area, when you can make it more efficient with multiple uses on the same property, it's better.
Yeah, and lacrosse, from a turf standpoint, lacrosse would probably benefit the most just because it is a spring sport. You know, there's 10 kids out there with cleats. You never know when that snow is going to come off, when that frost is going to come out. So from a turf standpoint, yeah, we would, we would absolutely benefit that.
Well, and that's the thing with the spring sports, having played baseball back in high school, I remember our season sometimes not getting on the field until the eighth game of the year, and then you're playing double headers the rest of the way. So, to have a synthetic field where you can start when the season starts.
So, yeah, so, so, you know, our season, our tryouts are, are the middle of March, and then we start right after that. We have, we have a, a jamboree down in Wasden on the 17th of March, and then our season, our games are beginning of April is when they start, and they go until, you know, end of May, in the middle of June, depending on when the state tournament is. So, yeah, April gets interesting with practice. We, we've utilized the hockey rinks in the area for, for spring practice. However, every year's a little bit different. When's the ice going to be out? Are they going to let us in? That type of stuff. This year, we don't know if we're going to have any space until, you know, until, until we can get outside.
And, and you understand as a non-sanctioned sport that, you know, we've, we've already got a shortage even with our sanctioned sports. So, unfortunately, the referendum, while it may be one of the solutions, it's not an immediate solution for your needs and, you know, we'll, we'll see what we can work out. But you understand the priorities and everything. Hopefully, we can build some partnerships with some of these other organizations.
We're working towards the, eventually, the WIA taking over the sport, allowing it to be a sanctioned sport. And then again, that's, that's, that's our goal. That's, that's the association, that is our goal from a high school standpoint, is to, is to get that in when, when we're able to.
All right, great. As long as you're not siphoning off too many of our players, good athletes, from the other sports, you know?
Baseball gets pretty mad sometimes.
All right.
They come from hockey, too.
Yes, yeah, exactly. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just for the benefit of the audience and our directors there, that we had, we've got a, a handout that was given by some of the members, so some, some more reading material, and I, again, I think we can get this on probably a future agenda for Facilities and Grounds Committee. So, with that, we move on to the next part, which is superintendent's report. Actually, he's got plural there, reports, so.
Well, apparently, the room's not quite as crowded for my, for my report. I guess we.
How's that make you feel?
That's just fine. Several components to the report, couple reductions or deletions from the report. As I get to them, I'll talk about it. But first, I want to talk about the January 8, 2016 enrollment report. What this is, is the second Friday count in January. What you have on your Google Docs and then up on the screen, which is not overly large for people from the crowd to see, but it's a comparison of where we were on our third Friday count in September to where we are in our second Friday count in, in January. The numbers, if you look at the numbers just to the left of the gray line there, that is, those would be resident students in our district, so our DPI count. So, we had 558 students in Jan, or in September. In January, we had 500, 5,559. So we had 5,558 in September, 5,559 in January. Things stayed pretty steady. As you can look across the, the document, you can see where we picked up kids, lost kids. Everything to the right of the document would be students that are coming in from other districts. We keep these counts, obviously, as we're reporting them to DPI, but the, the resident students, the 5,559 students, shows a pretty consistent number and from where we were in September, there's no, no real alarming changes or anything along those, those lines.
By resident students, that does not include those that are enrolled at private schools?
These would be resident students that are, these would be resident students that are paid for in one shape or another from our district or counted in our district. So, these would not be private school students, but these would include open enroll-out students to other districts. So, there are 80, as you can see, there's 80 students that are open enrolled out of the district. There are the, the six students that are out of the district for special programs and then, which would be tuitioned out. And then the other count, which is our early, predominantly our early childhood programming. Is that right, Tim?
Your early childhood is all the way on the left-hand side, and then you've got the, the column Nick was referring to as other with 39 students. Those are, those would be primarily speech and language students that get serviced less than a full school day.
Which would be our younger kids here at Rivercrest, correct?
That's right, yep.
Students that would be on a speech IEP, for example, receiving services. So, nothing real alarming about this, nothing real ear-shattering. It shows that we're about where we were in September, which is about 70 kids, give or take, from where we were this time last year, so.
70 more.
70 more.
Yeah.
Give or take. So, in a pretty good, pretty good position district-wise. The next item on the agenda, what I'd like to do is strike it, and the reason I'd like to strike it is because when we had our early dismissal last Tuesday, we also canceled kindergarten registration. So we don't have great data for you at this point, and what we want to make sure we have is confirmed students in kindergarten registration. So what we'll be doing at the March meeting, we'll be giving you the confirmed students that are typically you would get at the February meeting. And then we also have a report that, that compares historically what our February count has been to our actual September enrollment with kindergarten. So, we want to make sure we have an accurate number for you, and so that's why originally when the agenda was created, we were planning on that, and then we decided to let out early for the weather last Tuesday. The next item on the superintendent's report is the February 22 special meeting. We have that as a, as a placeholder, placeholder in case. As of right now, from a district perspective, we do not have anything pressing that we would need to actually implement that meeting. And with the amount of meetings that we have coming up and with the referendum information and other things, my recommendation would be not to, not to have it, but I would welcome any feedback from the board.
Well, we have a reduced number here, so we have five. It takes three of you to, to gang up on Nick and say, yes, we insist on having the meeting on February 22. Is there going to be a motion from anyone that wants to do that?
I would make a motion to cancel the meeting on the 22nd.
All right.
I would second it.
All right. Well, I don't hear anybody, and I agree with the reasoning. I mean, we have, which is going to go into the later reports, we're talking about our communication plan. We've got substantial opportunities for board members to be, you know, manning informational kiosks and attending those types of meetings, so. Plus, we have that meeting for WASB training on February 25 up in Turtle Lake, which is that same week. So, I, I would think the preference would be for that, so. I guess we seem like we have everybody on board.
Consensus.
Sounds great. Moving on through, the last one is referendum information update. A couple things, the, the communication plan, as was shared with you at the last special meeting on the 25th. Again, you have access to it through your Google Docs. There are different kiosks, there are different programs, different informational meetings that are set up in there. Please email Tracy if you can be available to help be a part of those booths and, and opportunity for people to ask questions. We have, there's lots of opportunities, I think, as of right now. I have 22 community presentations scheduled for myself, so I probably won't do a lot of the kiosk, but we could use some additional help with the, with the kiosk. And I would also welcome any board members that want to be a part of any of the other presentations that I'm giving, they're more than welcome as well to be a part of that. So.
If you get 23, then for sure. But 20, you can handle 22, I think you're pretty good.
Well, and, and the reason I say 22 is we want to make sure that people understand we are going to try to get as much information out there as absolutely possible and make sure people have, are making informed choices when they decide to vote on, on April 5. So, some of those are during the day, some of them are breakfast meetings, some of them are noon meetings, some of them are night meetings, some of them are building forums, and so really trying to hit all the different groups. Tracy's working on some of the groups that you've talked about on the 25th and coordinating some additional presentations, but if there are additional groups that you'd like to add, feel free to make sure to coordinate that with Tracy and she'll get that taken care of.
Let me just ask, what could, Mr. President? That maybe we have that distributed to the group again via Excel spreadsheet? So for those that haven't been able to access it via Google Docs, they can cast their time slot that they participate?
Ouch.
If, Tim, you could make a note to let Tracy know, we'll send it, we'll even make it easier than that, we'll make it as a PDF. So it's so universal, it will open just about anywhere. So, getting on to the next part of the referendum information. What you see up on the screen and what was part of your Google Docs that you may not be able to access for some folks, is the, is the first round mailer. And what this, what this, what this mailer is doing is trying to look at, just, it's just providing some very general background information on the fact that the board back in January set a resolution to go for a referendum. We will be providing the bulk of the information over the next two months. Election is actually eight weeks from today, if, I don't know if anybody's counting, but April 5 is, is eight weeks from today. What you see on the front page, what we worked with the architecture company Bray to create this, really our tagline is really about transforming spaces and reinvesting in excellence. And getting back to why, why is it we're looking at that? Because we really are talking about at the high school of transforming what we currently have. It is not just about putting paint on the walls or just about, you know, new carpet on the floor. It really is about transforming different spaces, which you're going to see in the, in the next set of images that'll be coming up. But also, we're talking about reinvesting what we currently have, and that goes back to the adding on and also repurposing some of the, some of the facilities that we currently have. The images Bray has been working on that are on the front page, they'll continue to refine some of those, and we may have some additional ones beyond what you'll have in the second, second round of images, but the questions are broken up that way.
Is this basically to the printer and ready to be mailed, or is there any further time for input from the board?
This will go out, this will, this has been to the, this left for the printer yesterday, and this will, this will drop in mailboxes Monday or Tuesday of next week. We would anticipate another mailer going out about the week before spring break, which would be a little bit more inclusive mailer, talking about, more in-depth about each of the three questions. And then we would have one more final information push, which would be, you know, that last week before, before the election, to remind people to vote and also to make sure that they have factual information in front of them as they're casting their votes. So, in the back, we give a little bit of a background on it, and then we have the, what will this reinvestment cost you? And we are very much making sure that we use the word increase, you know, the, everybody else would like to use the word impact, but we are talking about this is how much we believe it will increase people's taxes. So there's no code for trying to hide this. I mean, this is in addition to what they're currently paying to the debt service program with the district. So, if you go to the next, the next set of images, this is a conceptual image of what potentially the outside of the middle school would look like if the, when the, if the addition would pass. Again, just keeping the same themes of, of what's going on. The goal is to make it look like it's always been there, not to look like an addition out of the building. Part of the reason, you know, what they will do in all these images is you'll see a higher level of detail in any of the new spaces so that it stands out in these images compared to the old spaces, but if you were to look at the same detail, it's all the same matching with the brick lines and things like that. You go down to the next image, what this image shows is what potentially could be, you know, part of the two-story addition. We don't want to necessarily say this is what one house would look like or another house because part of, part of the addition, should it pass, would show, would involve a reprogramming of lots of spaces in that building. And it may not be just a dedicated house in that space, it may be a variety of different things. But again, what they're trying to illustrate here is looking at, you know, more flexible spaces, places for kids to be out in that center comments area where teachers could send groups of students out to work on things, but yet with all the glass, there's passive supervision, just a different. but yet with all the glass, there's passive supervision, um, just a different, a different learning, um, environment than what we currently have in a lot of our spaces. You go to the next slide, please. Um, this would be, as you're walking into what we would say would be the new Hudson High School, because, uh, the existing Hudson High School would be basically unrecognizable. So, you'd be looking at walking into the new main entrance between those two sets of trees in the front. You see to the left, the, uh, the two-story classroom addition. To the right, you would see a two-story addition that would include the main offices on the main floor and a weight and fitness room on the upper level, uh, of, of that addition. If you go down to the next slide, this is more of a bird's-eye view. Sometimes, uh, it's a little bit easier for people to see where exactly the addition would take place in, in relation to the existing building. Again, if you look at the more detailed part of the drawing, those would be what we would consider existing, or, I'm sorry, uh, additional spaces, and then the, the more plain block-looking things, those would be what's considered the existing building. It's just trying to show where the addition would fall in relation to the new building. It essentially would give the front of the, front of the building a very different look. Um, go to the next slide, Tim. This slide shows how the stadium would fit onto the site. Uh, it's kind of interesting from a standpoint of the, where the stadium and the building meet, it would be more of a plaza area, not necessarily a driveway. The requirement is that we have paved, uh, service, uh, all the way around the building for fire access, but it doesn't mean that it has to look like a driveway. So, because of the proximity of the stadium to the building, um, we would make it more of a plaza area. There'd be some, you know, other things in there, ticket booths, you can see the building that would support that, uh, facility. And then, uh, obviously, it could be used for soccer or for football or potentially, uh, lacrosse down the road. Uh, the nice thing about this facility is it would be designed with a European-style track, which means it's wider than a typical, uh, stadium. Uh, so it's not as long, but wider, so that means you could fit a wider field on there. That's why soccer fits well, lacrosse would fit well, other, other things would fit well on there. Uh, but just really trying to show how that all, all kind of flows together. If you go to the next slide, Tim. You may recognize this image, this is an image of what potentially the inside of the building could look like, a common space, obviously much different than what, what kids are currently utilizing, lots more natural, lots of natural light.
And the perspective here is with our backs to the auditorium, with looking out
Yeah.
into the parking lot.
Yeah, so, um, where those kids are up on that second-story catwalk area there, it'd be, uh, almost, almost halfway out into the parking lot currently. Um, so that addition basically fills in. If you think about, um, if you're looking at the high school, where the corner of the gym is, and there's some pine trees out there, basically if you filled in from the cor- from those pine trees all the way around to the west wing, that would be, uh, all building space as part of the new additions. Um, so you can see where, yeah, again, they're trying to bring in the, you know, more branding and Raider Cafe and, and opportunities to get into the gym, just a more inviting environment for kids, round tables instead of long rows and rows and rows of tables. Uh, it creates a much more flexible space for us to be able to host things, not only in the district, but if you think about this space, if it has seating for eight hundred people in the round tables, uh, if you were to just put chairs on the floor, you know, it might move the seating capacity if you wanted to have some type of presentation or something along like those lines. Could be anywhere from a thousand to twelve-hundred seats you could put in there and bring in a temporary stage or something along the lines for a presentation, a community event, or something along those lines. So, really a, a multifunctional space, uh, with its size. If you want to go to the next slide? So, these are interesting slides. So, as you can see, this is a before picture, this is the, the current condition at the high school. Uh, what's interesting about this is if you look at, uh, where that door sticks out into the hallway, and then if you envisioned a student at their lockers, like the student in the front here, um, standing about at the lockers by that doorway, you have about maybe two feet of clearance to get through that hallway there. Um, when, you know, we usually try to get anywhere from ten to twelve feet of clearance through hallways. So, you end up with these huge bottlenecks that happen in the current building. So, when you go to the next slide, it's the exact same hallway, the exact same dimensions. What it does is it has us taking the lockers out of that hallway through the locker bay concept. Uh, the windows to the right have us opening up those light courts, as we talked about, that have been filled in with classrooms in the past to bring some natural light into the space. And just all the classroom doors, instead of opening into the hallways, they all open into the classrooms. So, the, although the, the hallway's not any wider, uh, there's fewer obstructions and, and the, the actual functional part of the hallway goes from anywhere from like two to three feet wide to ten feet wide. So, really improves traffic flow for students. If you go to the next slide, uh, these are, um, named the egg bathrooms. Those are actually bathrooms inside that, uh, that, that's not a distorted picture, it's actually an egg-shaped, uh, uh, facility on the west wing. Um, and it creates some supervision headaches, as you can imagine, because it goes all the way around. Uh, there's places where kids can get all the way around, and it's a supervision headache. When you go to the next slide, it shows what that space could look like by taking, taking those bathrooms out, relocating them, putting in some collaboration spaces, both soft furniture, hard furniture, standing kiosk areas for kids to be able to use their devices, charging stations. Um, teachers, again, like at the middle school, could send kids out to work at tables, and you have the passive supervision through lots of glass and things like that in the hallways. And so, it really is a totally different look and, and totally different animal when we're talking about what the inside of the existing high school would be. If you go to the last slide, uh, I'm sorry, there's two slides. Uh, this is the current auditorium picture, and, um, it's actually, I think Josh, uh, Josh Helverson took this picture for us. It's actually like fifteen pictures that are stitched together to get that wide of an angle. Um, but what we wanted is a before picture. Um, it, the, the auditorium is not, not a terrible space, so to make the argument that it's a terrible space would not be a, a fair assessment. But it is a space in need of, of upgrading. And so, when you go to the next slide, you know, a potential rendering of what that could look like, which would be bringing in more of our school colors, bringing in sound panels, lighting, rigging, new staging, um, as far as things on stage curtains and, and other things along those lines, and new seating to really make it a much more inviting, uh, experience. We, we talk about it as improving the performance experience, both for our kids and for the people in the audience. And, and that's the goal behind the auditorium renovation. So, those images and the mailer images, um, we're working on getting those, uh, up on the website and getting a, a much more concise area on our website where people can go to find information about the referendum. Uh, obviously, all the information that we have, we put on our website. Uh, so it, it's not as though, you know, some people have said, when are you gonna put out more information? Uh, it's not as though we're holding the good stuff back until March. I mean, everything is on our website, but what we're going to continue to do is look for ways to refine the information that's out there, make it more user-friendly with our, um, uh, constituents groups and, and people in the community, so that, uh, the people can use it. But everything that we have information-wise is, is currently on the website, so we'll work to make it a little bit more user-friendly within the referendum tabs on the website. Any questions about renderings, mailers, referendum planning?
You mentioned about distorted pictures there. I know these renderings are just diagrams. There was one where it looked like the walls were not ninety degrees. That wasn't some kind of new architecture, it was just a disor-
Wait, wait, which, which picture, the egg-shaped one?
No, no, uh, number three, I think it is.
So, not that one?
It's the conceptual main entrance.
Okay, keep going. So, almost the very first image.
Yeah, well, back down.
Right there? Oh. So, uh, actually, on the-
Cause it looks like the building's slanted, is that like-
It, it actually is slanted. So, so what, what happens is that main corridor, we see a lot of that glass in the back there, that's a, um, that's actually a radius, it's like a partial circle. And then what happens is that addition comes out tangent to that circle. And then there's also that same, that same radius circle is on the front of the academic wing as well. So, again, it's to make it a little bit more interesting. It's not a, a cost, you know, it doesn't, you know, somebody say, well, making circles costs more than making straight lines. Well, typically, yes, if you were gonna make a circle small like this, but when you're talking hundreds and hundreds of feet, um, this is essentially a straight line, uh, when it comes to construction. It's, it, there's not an added cost. But, you know, if we were gonna do a ten-foot square or circle room, it'd be a, a challenge. But, so, yes, it does come out at an angle, so that when you walk in, if you go to the next picture, or the picture up, Tim, um, yeah, it is, it kinda, it, it opens up wide, the entrance, the entrance to the building kinda opens up wide and then draws you into the main, the main entrance of the building. And again, these are just conceptual drawings, uh, because the board will go through a, uh, RFP process for an architect and, and, uh, a full design development phase. But what these are designed to do is show you and show the public what could potentially, uh, things could look like if the referendum passes.
All right. Good. Any other comments, questions with that?
These are great. Yeah, very nice, uh, very nice additions. And, again, I think it's, uh, just adding to the community engagement, you know, the entire way through. So, thanks for, uh, leading the charge and getting this put together.
Well, I just, I, you know, I, I've had some people comment, and they said, well, it seems like we're kinda in a lull right now, we're not getting, you know, when's the, when they're, the information gonna really get rolling. There's a lot of things that are happening right now, uh, at the district office level to put these types of documents together, put mailers together. Um, we're meeting with Bray via conference calls almost on a daily or bi-daily basis, you know, to go over these things. They're turning things around very, very, very quickly with these images. Uh, we also have a informational video that's being put together. Uh, we would anticipate that that'll be completed sometime, hopefully the end of next week. Um, so, we're trying to get out as much information as possible, so the, um, if people have questions, it's, they can, in, in the end, we don't want people to say, well, you never told us this, or you didn't provide us enough information. And so, but it does take a while to put it out and make sure it's accurate, make sure it's right, and make sure, because you only get, you know, one chance to make that first impression. So, that's what we're trying to do.
Okay, very good. Next on the agenda is the, uh, Board President Report, and very briefly, we, I have on here, uh, State Education Convention, which was already really discussed at our January twenty-fifth special board meeting. But, um, and I put Bruce on the spot then, and I just didn't discuss with you now, but, I mean, as far as the highlights, this was your first, uh, convention, as was Rob's. Rob was the delegate, and, um, he did, I think, all the board members, you received the report from Rob as far as the votes on the different resolutions. Did you get that?
I don't know that I saw the votes.
Okay. I think that's something we can share with the board members, and then he, he kinda reported, showed me, and it was similar to when I was delegate, a lot of the votes are one-sided, frankly. And, um, so, except for Resolution sixteen-sixteen, and that had to do with the prevailing wage, so I had Rob do up a little bit more. This was, um, the resolution that had WASBE supporting legislation to allow board, school boards to reinstate the state prevailing wage law, so that, um, we could spend more on our construction projects if we wanted to pay higher wages, um, and make sure that the companies that we hired paid higher wages. Um, so, the, the, the Resolutions Committee advanced this to give WASBE membership an opportunity of vote, whether they wanna give local school board choice to reinstate the prevailing wage. And when we were discussing this earlier, uh, we had kinda said that we would oppose that. I mean, we're, we just want to follow the state law and not, um, put ourselves in a position where we're, you know, running, you know, making a choice to opt out of state law or anything like that. So, we didn't support the resolution. Rob was one of, let's see, what did he say? Twelve delegates to get up. Seven of the twelve opposed, spoke against the resolution, and, you know, his reasoning was that it adds fifteen to twenty percent in labor cost to projects at a minimum, and that if you hire properly qualified contractors, those are gonna overcome the concerns of questionable work, and that paying people more wages doesn't necessarily guarantee the higher quality of work. So, as a result, that still ended up passing, I think. It did not pass, okay. He didn't put the, the final vote was on the other report that, that again, so, in the end, I guess, the way we voted is the way that it ended up. So, um, that's the report on the state convention, unless you had more to add, Bruce? All right. Then, as far as our January twenty-fifth meeting, um, we did have a work session that we had, we had been a placeholder in case we needed it for the referendum resolution, but since we passed that January twelfth, we did discuss the preliminary compensation planning. Um, we also talked about a board retreat. We have set a placeholder date of May twenty-first as an all-day retreat, and we'll look for a location and a facilitator to be determined. But, um, it's something we wanted to reserve now, so that, you know, we've got an election between now and then, so the wake-up of the board may change, but we wanted to get that out there. And I know that the April and May agendas are going to be pretty full, uh, as it is, but we thought we needed a retreat before we get too far into the next, um, budget year. Um, and then, we've got the WASBE workshop, which I already talked about, which is gonna, is coming up on February twenty-fifth. I don't know, how many of the board members here are planning on going to that? That's a Thursday night. Okay, Sue? All right. Turtle Lake.
I believe I'm gonna be in California that night.
Okay, so you're traveling, and Carrie can't make it. Um, so, we'll see, uh, about, I think Sandy's still gone, cause she's gone pretty much for the month of February. But, um, anyway, it's on community leadership, happens to conflict with parent-teacher conferences, so then you'll have to attend those, uh, the week before on the eighteenth, I guess.
Four fifteen, my friend.
What's that?
Four fifteen.
Okay, there you go. Um, set that appointment early. All right, so, and then the referendum communication plan, Nick's already explained that, um, we're to, when we get that email, uh, to get back to Tracy and start filling in names of when we can, historically, we've tried to have two board members stand at those, and these are just, they're not anything that we have to go out and, you know, be like a carnival, you know, sideshow director or anything like that. It's just standing there, being able to answer questions, very passive, um, for folks that are, you know, coming to, uh, district events. Because not everyone gets the newspaper, not everyone goes to the website, and so this is just another way of going out, meeting the people. I know there's gonna be efforts for those churches that are willing to have us, uh, come in. Uh, Bethel Lutheran is one of those. You know, this is another area where folks who may have no connection to the district, no kids in the district or anything, and this is their opportunity to be able to get firsthand information, um, just what the referendum is about. So, that's a very important piece to this, and like Nick said, we have eight weeks to go. And that's the, that's what we did at the January twenty-fifth meeting. Anyone have anything to add to that? I think we had six out of the seven board members that were able to attend that, so, appreciate, uh, this is actually our lightest meeting in the longest time that I can remember as far as having five of the seven. With that, um, I move now to the consent agenda, and I'll entertain a motion based on the wording. What's that? Oh, we got an assessment report. I gotta, I'm just getting used to this Chromebook and flipping back and forth with these tabs. So, who's given the assessment report?
Sandy is.
Sandy is, all right. I didn't see a name next to it, so thank you.
All right, thank you. We want to bring to the board and our stakeholders a report of our spring twenty-fifteen performance data, the Wisconsin data. Recognize that those tests were given in March, April, May of last spring, and they were just released in January, hence coming to you in February. So, just a little bit of background information, the Wisconsin Student Assessment System is intended to provide districts information on what students know in core academic areas, as well as college and career readiness. The Wisconsin Assessment System, the results are also intended to provide districts information to assist with improvement efforts and are used for state accountability purposes. But know that this year, that there is a pause because of the changeover with the tests, so there would, there is no school report cards for this year. And in Wisconsin, the hope is that the assessment system should provide useful information to parents, to educators, and to the public. In twenty thirteen fourteen, our state assessment grades three through eight and ten was the WKCE. Some of you recognize the Wisconsin Knowledge and Concepts Exam Tests. In twenty fourteen fifteen, then it shifted, and so the Wisconsin Assessment System included the Badger Exam in three through eight, and then in fourth and eighth, they also had science, and in four, eight, and ten, they had social studies. Dynamic Learning Maps, that is measuring the academic progress of students with significant cognitive disabilities, hence why it's only at about one percent of our students that actually then are assessed through the Dynamic Learning Maps. And then the ACT Suite, meaning there's ninth and tenth grade, early kind of ACT, they're called the ACT Aspire, and then we have the full ACT plus writing in grades eleven. So, I know in the fall, when I had the ACT results, it's a little confusing, cause now we actually have two different kinds of results. What I'm sharing tonight, then, is the ACT results of all of our eleventh graders. I thought at the same time, I would also share, then, the spring results of our Measures of Academic Progress. We often refer to it as the MAP test. The Measures of Academic Progress is the national assessment that's used by the district, and we use it as our K-eight universal screener. And the assessment is given in the fall and spring with optional mid-year testing. MAPS provides computerized adaptive tests that measure student growth and achievement, and we have over ten years of longitudinal data at both a student- and we have over 10 years of longitudinal data at both a student and district level with MAPS. We use the MAP, then, to, again, know our students, guide instruction, there's something called the Learning Continuum that teachers then can use to see where students are at and some next direction as far as instruction, and then obviously, then, to report progress, especially that growth. It aligns with our vision for assessment in the district. So, here are our results. In English Language Arts, you can see, then, we are showing the district results in the blue and the state results in the red. We're gonna look at some comparisons, I put the MAP right after, 'cause what we're trying to show tonight, hopefully, is some of attempts with multiple data points. When we look at the state assessment compared to national, do we see similar kinds of trends going on? So, you can see, we're fairly close, district and state, at the third grade level, there's only a five percentage point difference there. It expands to fifth and sixth, and then comes back down a bit, and then expands again at eighth grade. So, then the next slide is showing the performance with the Measures of Academic Progress. Now, different scale, we're talking RIT, but again, we're just looking at the difference in those spans, but you can see, again, that it winds at about that fifth and sixth grade level. So, even between those two assessments, we're seeing some similar things going on within our reading performance, that fifth and sixth stands quite a bit, whether it's the state level or the national assessment, that we are showing us greater gains in our district at that fifth and sixth grade level. Then we do mathematics, and we sit quite a bit above the state in this one. So, we're seeing up to fifth grade, is it 28.9 percentage point difference between the state and the district, so very strong performance in math. And then you can also see, then, when we show the Measures of Academic Progress, some similar things, a little tighter, but some very similar things going on in fifth grade, so very strong performance in fifth grade, both at the national and state levels, in both reading and mathematics. And then our ACT Suite, once again, the ACT has five areas, English Reading, Writing, Math, and Science, and again, those scores are reported out. ELA has several areas, English Reading and Writing subtests that we can see. And what we note, then, is our, the district results compared to the state, and overall, our results show 62% of Hudson High School students achieved at the proficient or advanced performance levels in ELA compared to 45.7% statewide, and in mathematics, 50.8% were proficient or advanced compared to 35.9 of juniors statewide. And again, this was all of our 11th graders, about 429 students took the, this assessment last spring. Now, here's where it gets a little fun, because we are looking at another new assessment, then, this spring. So, we had the WKCE in 1314, Badger Exam in 1415, and now this spring, we will have the Forward Exam. Again, it'll cover ELA, Math, Science, and Social Studies, grades three through eight, and then our 10th graders need to take these Social Studies assessment. The good news is the ATC Aspire and ACT and Workies will stay the same at the high school level. So, moving forward, once we can get some trend data going again, it'll take us a few years to do that, if, as long as the state stays, then, with the Forward Exam, once we get some, multiple years of data, we can start looking for trends across grades and our subgroups and our content areas, and then obviously, we always wanna use our data for school improvement, as well as for teachers to know next steps, what else can we do to help differentiate and personalize learning, and then close any gaps that the data might show us. Any questions?
Mr. President.
Carrie.
Sandy, the Badger Exam and the MAP testing are two different assessments, correct?
Correct.
What, how did we perform in the MAP testing against the state?
It's, I'd only have, be able to contact other districts in the state that administer the MAP, it's not something that's given in every district throughout the state. It's a district-by-district decision to administer the MAP assessment.
How many, how many districts did?
I don't know, there's a high percentage in the state that do.
Will we ever see that comparison?
No. We don't, there's no, there's, we receive our results, but we don't have any way to look at other results, unless I contact districts and ask if they would release that to me.
Okay.
Sandy, thank you for the report, because I know this has come up in learning program development, and it's one of the areas where I can speak for myself, I don't know about other board members, but we get communications from the public about how many assessments and how many times our kids are getting tested, and, so, I know you don't have control over the switching of the tests.
Correct.
But can you give it, what are they telling you as far as the rationale for why we are now on our third test in three years for a particular age group?
It was a legislative decision last spring. Some of it had to do with some of the controversy in the state with Common Core and Smarter Balanced. Badger was a, considered a Smarter Balanced Assessment, and so the language now in statute says it cannot be associated with the Smarter Balanced Consortium. Now, my understanding is the vendor with the Forward Exam is DRC, and supposedly, there is a six-year contract with that vendor, so hopefully, now, we are settled on an assessment that we will have for several years.
But this Forward Assessment, sounds like it's going, then, is that gonna be something that's given in other states, so that we can compare ourselves to other states?
Nope, that's the downside. With the, with the Badger, we were gonna be able to compare ourselves, Wisconsin would be able to compare themselves with other states. The Forward Exam will be a Wisconsin-only assessment, so we'll be back similar to the WKCE, where we'll only be able to compare ourselves to other districts in the state.
So, we have the politicians making the determinations of what are the best assessments for the students?
In some ways. They, they are giving us the, at the K2 level, they are requiring the PALS, and they are giving us, the districts, the option at that point to decide what assessment they want for early reading readiness.
All right. Other than this changing of tests, are there steps being taken to try and minimize the number of assessments being given to a particular grade?
Yes. So, we have a team, especially leading with Dave and Tony, who were looking at our current number of assessments, how often they're administered, and trying to make, yes, best decisions so that we maximize, maximize student instruction with the teacher, and provide teachers and parents and the district the information they need, but with the minimal amount of interruptions.
Great. Any other comments? All right, thanks for that report. I guess now I'll jump ahead, I jumped the gun there, sorry about that, for consent items.
Mr. President, I move approval of the consent items, and that the Director of Human Services be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $1,961,189.39.
Second.
Motion by Lynn, second by Bruce. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consent item agenda is approved.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If I may quickly, you just acted on the personnel pack, and as part of that personnel pack, there was a number of retirees, and I just wanna list the ones that we haven't previously addressed and talk a little bit about their time in the district. So, the first one is Sherri Hole, speech and language pathologist, her building is EP Rock, she's been in the district, and this is just Hudson School District experience for all these people, 35 years. Another one, Ann Goodlad, a teacher, LD teacher at the high school, 16 years. Deb Lee, a biz ed teacher, business education teacher at the high school, 27 years. Jerry Yucatil, a fiaed teacher at the high school, 28 years. Deb Andrews, an LD teacher at the middle school, 15 years. Carol Dolly, who we heard from tonight, choir teacher at the middle school, 40 years. Diane Franklin, Associate Principal at the middle school, 36 years. Tim Helverson, math teacher at the middle school, 30 years. Jenny Newman, English teacher at the middle school, 31 years. Dana Sperry, occupational therapist at the middle school, 26 years. Judy Wickstrom, a secretary to the principal at the middle school, 20 years. And Patty Schuknek, the GT gifted and talented teacher at North Hudson and Holton, 15 years. So, all of our retirees, put together, are 379 years of service to the Hudson School District, so we'll be recognizing them at the banquet in May.
That deserves a round of applause.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, well, thank you, and that, you know, it was fortuitous that Carol was getting her award here tonight, and there's still opportunity for recognition of some of these retirees and their length of service and so forth at the district event, what's that, you said, in May?
Yes, May 16th, I believe.
All right, excellent. And Paper also does a great job with highlighting those teachers that have been here for generation plus, that's, that's great. All right, we have one more action item, then, and that is the petition from Nathan and Lindsay Anderson to transfer property from the Hudson School District to the River Falls School District, and would ask the Andersons come forward?
Yeah, I'll just interject, as Mrs. Anderson's coming up to talk about the reason for their petition or for their request. In these, in these requests, these petitions, the last one was done about two years ago, and there's some criteria that the board will need to consider in their decision. This did go before Finance, or a joint meeting of Finance and Facilities and Grounds members, and they had consensus on it, but again, the whole board needs to make this decision, and you're required to give the petitioner an opportunity to speak, and so, we'll let Ms. Anderson talk about the petition a little bit, and then I'll go through some of the criteria with you, and then you'll have a, have a, some deliberation and make your decision by passing a resolution. So, with that, we'll, I'll let Ms. Anderson start to talk about her petition.
So, you're gonna fill us in on the criteria after she speaks?
Right, I'll do that after, yes.
Okay.
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm alone tonight, my husband had to put the kids to bed, so, thanks for allowing me the opportunity to speak, oh, sorry. Is this good?
That's better.
Sorry about that. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak, and I have to script myself, or I'll go off on a tangent. As you can see from the map up there, my husband and I and our two kids, we live in Troy Township. Our house is located on the border between the Hudson and the River Falls School Districts. As I said, we have two kids, currently, the oldest is in third grade, the youngest is in first grade. Just a little history, when my daughter was four and a half, she has an August birthday, we went to the kindergarten roundup here at Rivercrest, and she was terrified, she wasn't anywhere near ready for kindergarten, even though she was gonna turn five in August. So, we started looking for some other alternative options for her, so she could have some education while she prepared for kindergarten. And that's how we found Heartland Montessori School in River Falls. It was the ideal environment for her, the way that they present the, the materials, the educational environment, she could explore, she could be curious, and my son also found success there as well, and we've become big supporters of Montessori education. I'm currently the Chair of the Board at Heartland Montessori now. But Heartland closed its elementary program in 2014, and my kids needed to find another school, and we were hoping to continue Montessori education, but living in the Hudson School District, there is no Montessori, elementary, middle, or high school option. So, our kids now attend a private school in Stillwater, St. Cory Montessori School. And as you know, private education is expensive, and it's not actually our first choice. My husband and I are products of the public school system, he in Minneapolis and me in St. Paul. We support the public school system, and we wanna be part of it. The River Falls School District offers us something that Hudson can't, which is a public Montessori school for our children. So, granting our petition to join the River Falls School District that's adjacent to our property would allow us to enter the public school system without compromising what we feel is in the best interest of our children. We realize you have to weigh many factors in your decision, and there is a financial impact, along with detaching our property to another school district, and we understand that, but we hope you will give equal weight to what we feel is the best educational options for our children. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Anderson?
I think, I think, Tim, you should go through what your criteria are, and if we have more questions, we can ask her.
Okay, sure, sure. So, again, and Tim, if you can advance to the criteria there, and some of these criteria you're gonna look at, and, you know, they're not going to apply, because this criteria is also used for large detachments of property, when there are large acreages that are detached from a school district, but the state has you consider the same criteria, and when you look at these, it's really criteria number four that would apply here, so it's the estimated fiscal effect of proposed reorganization. As, as we discussed at committee meeting, right now, the facts stand that the assessed value of the property is about 504,000, the estimated fair market value is about 468. The property generates $3,500 of school tax to the district, and one, one of the things that has been considered in the past is looking at, when you, again, looking at that map, it doesn't, we don't have a problem with contiguous property, so that wouldn't be an issue, but a lot of times, when you have a petition, possibly, it can drive other petitions in the neighborhood, and that, that could definitely have a larger impact than just the one property. Folks like to go to neighborhood schools, they like their kids to go to, go to the same school, but in this case, you know, we're really looking at that criteria number four. Every, each district, and this petition also went to the River Falls School District, I believe they're making their decision next week, but each district has to act prior to March 1st, and they need to, as we stated before, give the petitioner an opportunity to present their case as to why. Appeals, there is an opportunity for, for the petitioner to appeal this, to an appeals panel at the state level, and we look at a couple of years, we pulled a couple of years of data, roughly 20 petitions were filed statewide, and districts at the, the district level, out of those 20, roughly 18 were denied at the district level, and there were appeals, which appeals were six and seven, in looking at those two years of data, and of which three of the six were reversed in one year, and two were reversed in another year, and one was a modified opinion. But again, it's, it's consistency in applying the criteria that do, that, that are applicable in each one of these cases. So, that's, that's what I've got for you, if you have any questions. Otherwise, there's also sample resolution language to make your motions at the table.
Mr. President?
Sue.
I have a question for Ms. Anderson. How old are your children right now?
My children are nine and seven.
Nine and seven, and then, once they are completed Montessori, then what high school would they be going to? That you have in your plans?
Ideally, they would attend River Falls High School.
Okay. Not a private school?
No.
I guess I have a question. Have, well, did you consider open enrollment application?
Yes. We have submitted one of those as well.
Okay, so you have submitted, you don't have a decision on your open enrollment?
Correct, they don't make that decision until June.
All right. But it would be an open enrollment from Hudson to River Falls, and there's no space issues in any of the River Falls schools, are there?
There is in the River Falls Public Montessori School.
Oh, in River Falls Public Montessori? Okay. So, there's, is there any certainty that you would even get in that program, then?
Not as an open enrollee.
But you're guaranteed if you are in a resident of that district?
I can't say guaranteed, but it's far more likely.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
May I ask, Ms. Anderson, how long have you lived in your current home?
Nine years.
And, I'm sorry, did you build or purchase?
No, we are the second owners.
Was it fully explained to you at the time which school district? I know it's very close to Rivercrest, so it could've been deceiving, but was it clear which district?
It was, yes, we, we, when we purchased the house and all the real estate materials, it did say Hudson School District. Our daughter was an infant at the time, and it wasn't a huge consideration at the time. The other residents around us all built, and they were told at the time the neighborhood was built that they could choose which school district they wanted to be in, and they chose Hudson.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Just to comment, these are tough discussions, because it's hard not to bring the emotional side into it. You know, one other situation I can think of as a board member, that we've been through this, and, and there was a family from... been through this, and, and there was a family from Somerset that had a need and some other very unusual circumstances that were, that were difficult. And I think ultimately, you know, sometimes we need to strip the emotion for some, some, some of these decisions. And in our finance committee, you know, we did come to an agreement that it, it was not in our best interest to take the tax out of our district and, and move that. It sets precedent in some cases as well for other adjacent lots as well. So, as difficult as it is for me, from a emotional perspective, you know, it's not something that I would support in terms of taking those revenues away from our, our district, and that was what the consensus was of the finance committee as well. And I know Rob and Sandy aren't here, but that was the way that they voted as well that evening.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Part of, part of it for me is having that consistency with making these decisions, and historically, the district has not allowed property to detach to another district. So, I would concur with what Bruce said, and also for me, a big part of it is not, not appearing that you're arbitrary. You know, while I might find your story very compelling, like Bruce said, it's about the business of running the district and keeping those tax dollars in our district.
Anybody else have anything further from Ms. Anderson? Otherwise, she can sit down, and then we'll entertain our motion, have further discussion. But any other questions of Mrs. Anderson?
Thanks for coming tonight and speaking your case. Do appreciate that.
Any other comments, or we could entertain a motion at this time? But if you do, I'd just ask that you read the entire motion for the record.
Mr. President, I move to deny the transfer of the territory described in the petition, that the reorganization requested in the petition filed on December eighth, two thousand fifteen by Nathan and Lindsay Anderson, to detach territory described in said petition from the Hudson School District, and to attach it to the River Falls School District be denied, and that said petition be dismissed.
Second.
Motion by Lynn, second by Bruce. We, previously, we're told the recommendation from finance. I guess I would kind of echo the comments made earlier as far as, I mean, I can certainly empathize with a parent who wants to get the best education for their children, what they feel is the best education. No doubt that that's got to be your number one concern, is watching out for your own. But we have to have consistency, and if everyone who said, well, my concern is the best education of my kids, and as a board, we can't just say, well, that's good enough for me, and then we move on. We have to look at, weigh everything. And the concern here about offering a public Montessori school program, something that Hudson doesn't currently have, is kind of a temporary situation, both in terms of what we may be able to offer once we have other facilities and we continue to look at our programming here in our district, plus just from the terms of the children getting older. They're going to be then middle schoolers and going to high school and not in that Montessori situation, which would be the need within, what, five years? The youngest is seven years old. And here, we're making a decision, not just for the next five years, but for ever and ever, we would remove half a million dollars or more, because property appreciates in value, half a million dollars from our tax base. And so, I think that that's an obligation we have also for the other taxpayers to be carrying, you know, the overall, the impact on our overall budget maybe seem minimal, but there's that cumulative effect.
Yeah, I, I also think the open enrollment's there for a reason as well, you know, and that does offer alternatives for parents that live in certain areas or communities that may have a different desire or need. So, I mean, that's there, and can only hope that in your, your case, that, that works out very positively for you.
All right. Any other comments or questions? I would agree that if there was a denied open enrollment application, that would be something that would be another factor I would consider, if there were other factors changed as well. But, all right, anything else? Otherwise, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries, and the request is denied. We've completed our agenda, and we are-
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.